Should we start? I can't see. Oh, gosh. Okay, so we are at Town Council for a council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Okay, record of attendance, and there's no absent with regrets. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? And you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Councillor Hatfield?
Yes, one addition, dark sky friendly lighting.
Okay. Dark sky friendly lighting. So I'm just trying to go down. That's under thirteen. We're going to put it under thirteen A. Any other additions or any deletions? Good, okay, so a motion to approve the agenda with the addition, please.
So moved.
Councillor Cleveland, second by councillor Dares. Any discussion? Questions called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. All right, approval of minutes, public hearing January fourteenth, please.
So moved.
Councillor Cleveland, second by councillor McLeod. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Town Council, January fourteenth, please. Deputy Mayor? Councillor Hatfield? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, January twenty-eighth. Councillor Cleveland, second by councillor Hatfield. Discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And special town council, January twenty-eighth, please. Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Second by councillor Cleveland, any discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, no presentations, business arising. So nine A, fifty-six Argyle Street. We just had a public hearing earlier this evening, and this is the second reading. And this is where, if there's discussion by council, we can do that. And then I would be looking to a motion, for a motion, to do whatever you wish to do with it. The recommended motion is that council proceed with the sale of the property situated at fifty-six Argyle Street to a nonprofit for the sum of one dollar to allow for the development of a multi-unit mixed housing complex, and that the offer be conditional on the project commencing within two years of the date of the sale. So I need a motion and a second or two. Okay, so moved, second by councillor Dares. Okay, so discussion, does anybody have anything to share on that one? Are we good to call the questions? Go ahead, councillor Dares.
Oh, just, I think for public information, the purpose of this is to create a mixed housing unit on Argyle Street. And I think it's going to be a first step in revitalizing a neighborhood that needs some attention. And I believe that proceeding with a mixed housing unit is the way to go. Especially when we're talking about it being, the property being sold to a nonprofit cooperative housing association that will provide not only governance, but also will provide management and maintenance. And that the tenants in those units would be under contract to provide standard, to maintain minimum standards. So I think it's a really good project. I think also it puts a piece of vacant property back on the tax roll, which is a good thing as well. So I would encourage anyone that had any questions about it to give us a call. But it's, I think, a really good first step in improving the neighborhood.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else? Okay, so the motion was as it was written there, so. Okay, yep, certainly. Okay, questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, the second reading for three-three-nine Pleasant Street. And the recommended motion, which is here for debate, is that council approve second reading to enter into an agreement to substantially amend the existing development agreement, document nine-one-seven-five-one-five-two-zero for three-three-nine Pleasant Street, in order to permit a number of additional accessory structures on the property, and that staff be authorized to schedule a public hearing for the matter. Yes, exactly. That's okay. That's okay, as I was reading it, I said, okay, we just did that. So we've already had to, we've already done the public hearing earlier this morning, this evening, and.
Your worship, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by councillor Cleveland, second by deputy mayor. Discussion, councillor McLeod? Put your, can you put your, we're going to try again. Okay. So. Grab that microphone.
We spent some time.
Your honor.
We spent some time talking about this, our planning advisory committee, and they need the extra storage space. And we worked closely with our planner, and had, as I say, repeat myself, a good discussion at the PAC level. So I'm happy with the hearing that we've had, and look forward to them building their five additional units, or buildings for storage.
Good, thank you. Anybody else? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, under new business, ten A, tender results, streetscape phase two. So that council award the tender for Main Street Streetscape Phase Two to Garian Construction in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-three-sixty-nine plus HST as recommended by the town engineer. And is our engineer here? He was, just in case you had any questions or anything, he's here, but I'm looking for that motion. Deputy Mayor? Second by councillor Lesser? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Don't make me work for this. Okay, that's okay. It's kind of a calm evening. Ten B, tender results Ferry Terminal Work Package Eight. The recommended motion is that council award the tender for Ferry Terminal Work Package Eight to Graves Electrical in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-one-thousand-nine-fifty-six-thirty-five plus HST as recommended by the town engineer. Looking for that motion. Councillor Lesser? Second by deputy mayor. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. That's better, let's do this. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Okay, ten C, repeal property tax exemption bylaw. So the recommended motion is that council repeal the property tax exemption bylaw as recommended by the Director of Finance. CAO, did you want to speak to this one a little bit, maybe?
Sure, your worship, the property tax exemption, so it's a low-income property tax exemption that we're able to do through, under the MGA. We are actually able to do it by policy, and we have, over the years, changed our bylaw to reflect providing more money to people, or changing the income level. Where it's a bylaw, it requires two readings and a public hearing. So Jerry was updating it this year and asked the question, well, why don't we just rescind the bylaw and introduce a policy? The difference is, is that when you want to make a change to a policy, it requires one week's notice to council. So this would be first reading to rescind the bylaw, and you'll see further down, the next agenda item is to introduce a policy. So once the bylaw is completed and being rescinded, then the policy becomes the mechanism by which we do this. So it's just making the governance process a little bit simpler, and your ability to tweak that policy easier than it has been in the past.
Perfect, so, yeah, so I just, I want you to share that so folks understand we're not, we're just making it easier, not more difficult. So did I have somebody make that motion and second it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, councillor Cleveland, second by deputy mayor. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. So the next step, CAO, is it a public hearing, and then comes back to us for the second reading? Right on, okay, thank you for that. Okay, so ten E? Ten D? Property tax exemption policy, which is basically internal, so it makes things easier. So the recommended motion is that council adopt the property tax exemption policy as recommended by the Director of Finance. So move by councillor Dares. Second by councillor Hatfield.
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Ten E? Maintenance program policy, that council accept the manager of public works recommendation and make no amendments to the maintenance program policy. Okay, so why would we have to make a motion to have no amendments?
So, your worship, as we have been doing for the last five or six months, we're going through every policy and bylaw of the town. The director or manager responsible is reviewing it, and if any amendments are requested of council, those are coming forward as recommendations. But we'd like to have on the record that these policies have been reviewed and confirmed by council, even though no changes are being recommended.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so we're looking for that motion, councillor Lesser? And second by councillor Hatfield, is there any discussion on this one?
Question.
Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Hazard assessment policy, that council accept the manager of public works recommendation and make no amendments to the hazard assessment policy. We know why. Okay? Move by councillor Dares, second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion on this one? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thanks, folks. Okay, reports, council advisory committee, committee of the whole, deputy mayor, that would be you. There you go.
There we go. I move that council direct staff to investigate implementing a bylaw restricting large trucks in the downtown.
Second by councillor Cleveland, any discussion on that?
Question.
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you.
I move that council approve the town of Yarmouth mitigation action plan, excuse me, as part of a requirement from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and the Municipalities for Climate Change Innovation Grant Program, and approve the town's agreed-upon greenhouse emission reduction target of twenty percent below two thousand sixteen levels by the year twenty thirty. I'll second that.
Good, second by councillor Cleveland, any discussion on that one? That was DiMario's work, that was good work.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that DiMario Dunkley's worked on that project for the last two years for the town, and recently received a notification that FCM is actually looking to extend the deadline for the program beyond March thirty-first this year. Kind of indicating to me that maybe not all participants in this program got the work done on time, as DiMario did. So just a little shout-out to DiMario for good work done on behalf of the town.
I think we all could second that, this project, so call for the question.
Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that council approve funding for a three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar splash park in the amount of thirty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents for the capital cost at Mariner Center. Contingent on all funding being secured as outlined in the presentation, ownership of the splash park will be transferred upon completion to the owners of the Mariner Center, and ongoing operations will be part of the Mariner Center.
Okay.
Second that one.
Moved and seconded by councillor Cleveland, any discussion on that one? That one's pretty exciting. Get that splash park up and going.
Question.
Okay, questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, deputy?
I move that council designate PID nine-zero-one-nine-six-nine-seven-three as an extension of Water Street in the town of Yarmouth. Second.
Second by councillor Cleveland.
See the pattern.
Go ahead, councillor Dares.
Just to avoid any confusion, I know it's captioned as opening Water Street, but that doesn't mean that it has anything to do with the ATV issue.
No. We wish it did.
Yes, we do.
Okay, moved and seconded, any more discussion on that one?
Question.
All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that council amend the accessibility advisory committee policy to report to council and not to committee of the whole.
Seconded by councillor Lesser, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Oh, sorry, go ahead councillor Dare, sorry about that.
I just wanted to clarify, the purpose of that was that the, we can't have a committee reporting to a committee. And so it was just to clarify the policy, thank you.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, any more discussion or points?
Question.
Okay, questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
I move that council meet with staff to discuss the dangerous and unsightly files. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? I gotta say this, we were driving down to the youth center yesterday, and we saw that, the one on Commercial Street, there was a little small place on Commercial Street. I think the fire inspector had to go through that too, that came down. Yeah, it was pretty neat to see that lot cleared up, a lot safer. Okay, so who made, you made the motion, deputy, who seconded that? Councillor McLeod? Any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. Citizen advisory committees, planning advisory, that you, councillor McLeod?
I move that council amend the land use bylaw to rezone twenty-five and twenty-seven Clements Avenue from a low-density residential R1 zone to a high-density residential R3 zone. And contingent upon the appeal period ending both for the land use bylaw amendments and development agreement approval, enter into a development agreement for twenty-five and twenty-seven Clements Avenue for the purpose of permitting a multi-unit residential development of a maximum of twenty-three dwelling units, and that the mayor and chief administrative officer are hereby authorized to execute the agreement within the timeframe described in the draft development agreement as shown in Appendix Three of Reese's Brunel's report. And that staff be authorized to schedule a public hearing for this matter.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion to move this to the public hearing? Okay, go ahead there, deputy?
I'd just like to say, we had an announcement about the old high school. We just okayed Argyle Street, and here we are talking about a possible another, you know, housing plan. I think that's exciting. I know we all ran on, you know, that we needed affordable housing and other in this area, and it's good to see that these things are happening, moving forward so quickly into this council's. So happy to see that.
Go ahead there, councillor Cleveland.
Thank you, your worship, and as always, there's a process with these kind of things. And so, you know, we have to take it to public hearing and kind of move from there. But the presentation that was given to us at the planning committee was very exciting. And I'm really excited to see, I agree with you, deputy mayor, it's very exciting to see what's happening all of a sudden. And it's something that's desperately needed, and I guess, I guess the awareness has caused people to step up, and it feels really good. So it's very excited, exciting to watch these developments begin. I know it's a little while before any of them actually come to fruition, but it's great to see.
Yeah, it would be beautiful when they're all put together. But, you know, I've said this publicly, we're not taking our foot off the gas. No matter how many projects we give for housing, we're still going to keep the pedal to the metal, so this is good. So.
Thank you, your worship, and fellow councillors.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Reports for information, the police advisory board is on there. I don't have a report this month. Any questions for committee chairs, anybody? You look to press your button there, councillor, but there's no button. But speak right into the microphone. You're good.
So I don't think, on my walkabout around the area town, I wonder about two or three things, and just easy things. Your worship, what about the update on the old jail project?
Yeah, so I can, yeah, so there will be work going on in there, but COVID obviously takes a toll on it. And it's a private enterprise now, so they, there's a private owner who has, you know, he can do it on his own timeline, but just so we all know that the work is ongoing there.
And that's all I was inquiring about, I hadn't heard anything, and I hadn't thought to ask you in recent times.
Yep.
On John Street, opposite Dairy Queen, is, there was a fire in a building there a number of years ago, and it's owned, I think it's still owned by a lad who lives up the line, used to be the president of the YMCA a few, number of years ago. Could we investigate that possibility for parking? You know, in discussion with the owner, I think some people use it now, but I just wanted to bring that up. And also, what are the steps required to complete the sale of the high school? What, how much more time is required mostly?
Go ahead, CAO.
Yep, so, your worship, our purchase and sale agreement with the developers in the high school had two remaining conditions. One was a letter of commitment from the province of Nova Scotia, which was announced last week. So that box has been checked. There's still a requirement for a letter of commitment from CMHC. And so that is the next step. As far as the timeline goes, I'm going to not try to build expectations too high there, because I know there is a little bit of work that needs to be done. I believe they are undertaking a market assessment, a market study right now to confirm the need, I guess, or that demand will be there for the units. We're feeling pretty confident about that, but it's a step that has to be completed. I don't know what other steps are involved there with CMHC, but Natalie, our economic development officer, is maintaining constant contact with the developers as well as she was with Nova Scotia Housing, and has a contact with CMHC to ensure that the file doesn't sit and stall anywhere. So as soon as possible, one last hurdle, and we're feeling pretty confident about it. Natalie and I have spoken with a program officer at CMHC. He seemed enthusiastic, well aware of the project, and I'd almost say excited about it. So I think that it's going to check the boxes pretty quick there. But what does that mean? You know, it's taken a year from the time that the previous council put the proposal to the government to do the project that just got announced, you know, this week, or last week, sorry. So things don't happen as rapidly as we hope, but we're pushing the rock slowly up the hill. One last hurdle, and we should be off to the races with that.
Just one last item, my friend councillor Derek had an email about the traffic on corner of Main and Chestnut, and where the dental building is. And I travel that, walk that on a regular daily basis, and I'm just wondering, and I think Derek indicated there could be a building, that land was for sale. I'm wondering if the dental building people could investigate the leasing, consider the leasing that property for parking. It would take, limit some traffic, especially in the wintertime with the snow on each side of the street. And it's one-lane traffic, basically. And so I just wanted to find out if there was a way that that building, that land across the street could be leased, or rented, or purchased, if they, if it was a desire on their part. So it's just for information, and I don't know how we follow up on that, but.
Would you, I mean, okay, go ahead.
No, go ahead, your worship.
Well, I was just going to say, if the dental group wants to do it, you could bring that up with them. That's, I guess that's what I would do. It's their private business, the lot is there, owned by a private owner, so they would, you might just have a conversation with them to see if they're interested. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be us.
No, I was just making a note.
On any level. Yeah, go ahead councillor Lesser.
I guess, to add to that, if they, if some of the things change around parking, and I've seen some markings on the street, some orange markings, which think maybe things are progressing there, there's going to be fewer parking spots, so, you know, hopefully, hopefully they'll see the investment of that property as a good, as a good option for people to park, because when you take the parking away from some of the people parking on the street, they're not going to have a place to park. So I think it'd be great if they did look into it, but as your worship mentioned, I guess it would be up to them if they choose to purchase it. I know it's for sale with RE/MAX, it's a pretty good location.
CAO?
I just wanted to jump in on this one, because this is such a great example of why land use planning is important, and developers need to take and pay attention to parking. You know, the town has often been criticized for our parking requirements in parts of our land use bylaw, and in fact, we have backed off on that a lot. But this is how it can go wrong, when the development that occurred there has, appears to have a much higher attendance or attract a lot more customers by car than what was anticipated, or able to be handled on the lot. And so every day, the parking spills out into the adjacent streets, and for nearby residents can become a bit of a nuisance or an inconvenience. And so obviously, that's not what we, what the previous council or the council of the day intended when they, when they okayed that, and certainly probably not what the developer intended, but it is the consequence. The parking stalls on that property are similar to the Yarmouth Mall, they're quite narrow, you know, for some larger vehicles, and I used to have one. But it is an example, I guess, of how important it is in development process to, for developers to work with their planner and try to minimize future inconvenience to neighborhood. Now that being said, this is a small commercial district within the town. We don't have immediately in that area any public parking. We have talked about it in the past in conjunction with waterfront development. There were some properties on Water Street that had come up, and we had talked about potentially acquiring one for public parking. This, and I should say that the property we're talking about, the business we're talking about, is not the only business in that area that sometimes has more customers than they have parking available for. So it might be something that we want to. So, it might be something that we want to refer to maybe the planning department to have a look at, to see if there is a need or an opportunity to create some public parking in that area that would help to alleviate the pressures that a small commercial district puts on a surrounding residential district. Just a thought.
Your worship.
Go ahead.
Was it somebody, was it somebody else?
No, I don't see any lights. You're good.
I like that idea of discussion and at the planning department. So, I'm prepared to make a motion that we investigate parking in those areas that are concerned. And certainly in Milton, I sort of grew up in the Milton area and I think it's appropriate to have a discussion at the PAC levels. That can be one of my discussions after the business part of the meeting. Right, Reese? So, I'd like very much to, if you want, if you and Lindsay want to word the motion, I'll make it and we'll hopefully have a second or...
So, the motion is to investigate public parking?
In specifically in that area, but maybe the other areas will come to light in the investigation. I think if nothing else...
Go ahead there, Counselor.
I'll second that. But I wanted to add, I think in that particular area, in the Milton area specifically, not necessarily that building, but in that area specifically, there are a few issues. First one that comes to mind, I'll be honest with you, is the food bank. There's issues there as well. And it would be worth investigating. I'll happily second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion or thoughts, anybody? Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Additions, okay, so we have a, I don't wanna say a mistake, but I believe I emailed, I forwarded something to you folks a little bit earlier today that didn't make it on the addition. So, only with your permission and a motion that we could add it. And that one is, that is with regard to 275 Main Street?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so it's on the agenda for discussion now. All right, so we have, gotta find my page here. Okay, under additions, we have dark sky, Counselor Hatfield.
This was a motion, actually, that came from Communities in Bloom meeting of February the 3rd. And the motion that was put forward was that the council request Tim Dusset to meet with council and staff to discuss the dark sky friendly lighting. And if somebody wants to second that, then I would speak to that.
Counselor Dairs? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Southwest Nova has been celebrated for its dark skies for years. It is now a designated UNESCO Biosphere Reserve and it includes the Dark Sky Preserve and the Starlight Zone. This designation has made it a popular destination for stargazers and tours. In order to keep this designation, the night sky must remain dark. So, the artificial lighting has to be kept at a minimal and be pacific. And it would be helpful to have Tim come, and I think he has spoken to council in the past, but not to this council, and Tim runs the Deep Eye Observatory, to speak to council on what the town can do to facilitate that. So, as we're changing lights or adding lights, not to go out and change all our lights, but just to be aware and conscientious of what we do do in the future that could help maintain those dark skies that are valuable to us as a tourist resort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to invite, to invite Tim?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion or questions for Counselor? Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, and the one we just added, which I apologize for, the motion, suggested motion is that the Town of Yarmouth match the financial commitment of the municipality of Argyle and commit an initial $75,000 to the reopening of 275 Main Street, the former YMCA, to bridge services until a new aquatic center is available at the Mariner Center. I'm looking for that motion and a second or...
I'll make that motion 15 times.
Only need it once, but okay. Counselor Cleveland? Seconded by Counselor Hatfield. Okay, discussion?
So, we, so we're gonna be able to find that $75,000? That's always a concern that I have and I understand how we can do it. So, anyway, I just wanted maybe hear from, are you okay, Jeff?
Yeah, 100%. You know, we're heading into a new budget and we don't have a specific number tied to the reopening of 275 Main Street, although it's very clear that it's council's desire that we go there. So, Argyle made a motion at their, at their recent meeting, which kind of put an initial commitment out there and I think that that's, that's great and matching that, it gives us a number that we can work with. There's a lot of work that has to be done, but, you know, we'll, we'll throw that number over to Jerry to start with. I think part of the work that needs to be done is the development, if everyone's in agreement that we're gonna go ahead with that, is the development of what is the business plan? Like, what are we expecting to do there? What do we expect to have come in as revenues from different sources? And ultimately, from memberships and so on? And ultimately, what is the municipal commitment to the bottom line of that, of that project? And that number will then need to be added to our budget for next year. So, there's work that needs to be done and needs to be done fairly quickly if it's gonna be in time for budget. So, this is a good step. I'm not under any misconceptions about where this council is on this issue. You were very supportive and quick to support the acquisition of the property for this purpose if it, if it came to pass that everyone agreed to it. So, you know, Argyle's position on it is clear. You know, if we end up with three municipalities on the same page on this, then we can, we can begin to move forward. And so, yeah, I think that just clarifies it and will help us to be very clear in our intent.
How much have we spent on the purchase of the building? About?
The purchase of the building was about $250,000.
Yeah, and I know that, I was just, anyway, just as an emphasis, your worship and fellow councils, let's get the show on the road.
Yeah, and we've had that question as well, you know, with the public, do you support it? But we said we supported it when we purchased the building for a quarter of a million. But the $75,000 just reiterates. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I think it's a great example of how democracy can work well. The citizens spoke to all three units and said what their wishes are and they kept it positive. They didn't turn the campaign negative and I think they've put a lot of influence on people about the importance of having this building running as a bridge to the new, to the new pool, Mariner Center. And I think it's, you know, good work on behalf of all those people that took the time to campaign and write letters and start a Facebook group or whatever and keep everything in good taste. Nothing, I didn't see anything negative there, which is, which is really good to work with those partners.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Question, your worship.
Okay, questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Okay, so under there you have correspondence and we have a couple, but Lindsay, I think there's more even added to the committee of the whole. So, every time somebody sends us in correspondence with regard to 275 Main and their desire, and we've gotten a lot of them, we only have two on this council meeting, but I'm doing my best to share them all with council in case perhaps just myself and the deputy get some of them. But I'm trying to make sure that council is very aware of just how much support there is for the reopening. And again, Lindsay has quite a number of them on the committee of the whole as well because our commitment was to make sure that we, we put them out in the public and if anybody wants them read publicly, we can do that as well. Okay, approval of invoices? Oh, sorry, Counselor Lesser?
Sorry, I know it's not on the agenda, but I've talked to a few people since getting elected about the process of watching these and I'm watching these live and it seems like things move very quickly. I think it's important just to remind people that everything that happens in councils on the Town of Yarmouth website, you can go and read, everything that we're approving, we've pre-read and we're approving, but you can, you can get all the reports and stuff online. I know, like even my mother has mentioned, seems like you guys are rushing through some stuff and I don't really follow what's happening. But, yeah, everything is very transparent and online if you want to go through and read any of those reports.
That's, thank you for sharing that. It, that is really important for folks to know and I'm glad you said that because we, we get that often, like what, why don't you discuss anything? But, but I will say this and I can say it about the previous council and I can say it about this council already after only just a few short meetings. When you go through the committee of the whole and you discuss things and you put it all on the table and you're open and transparent, you really don't have to sit down for an hour and discuss every issue here. But if we feel the need to, then we do. So, I'm just really thankful that everybody comes really prepared. So, thanks for that, Counselor Lesser. It's, you're right, when people watch it on television that aren't on the website, they're probably thinking, thinking, what's going on? But it's because we've done our homework, we've done a lot of reading, a lot of meetings. Deputy Mayor?
So, just to follow up to that, we are on a new system now. So, if people, when they do go to the website, if they've been there in the past, it may not have been as nice. And you can now, after talking to Mike, you can click on one of the items and it will take you right into the video and right to that time and show you. So, for people who have been frustrated in the past, maybe check that out to see the updates because I know myself, I'm happy it's there and maybe some new cameras and mics in the future too, so...
Yeah, yeah, it's really, really neat. And the other thing about meetings, I was going to mention that when we, when we did the 240, 275 Main Street. But we had, we have the Mariner Center Expansion Committee and then we have two subcommittees, one for the expansion and one for the bridge. The bridge meets on Tuesday, CAO, and the expansion one meets tomorrow and we've, we've said we will, we will tape those. There will be a spot on the Mariner Center website for everybody to go to and it's, it's just really important that everybody, that's not just the people that are making decisions, but the public has all the information so that they can, you know, be, keep well informed. So, I'm really excited about that to keep everything updated and... All righty, so, did I do the approval of invoices yet? I started to and Counselor Lesser put his light on. So, Counselor Lesser, do you want to approve my invoices? Thank you.
Don't do it.
You have to, I already signed the checks. Okay, moved by Counselor Lesser? Seconded by Counselor Cleveland?
Don't do it, don't do it.
I have to tease you. Oh, my goodness. Any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. And the date of the next meeting is March 11th. So, okay, so thanks, folks. If you're tuning in via Eastlink, happy Valentine's from council. We love you. Yep, so, okay, so everybody has to...